All right, we're ready. Good morning and welcome to the January 3, 2011 meeting of the Barnstable County Commissioners, and I wish a Happy New Year to all here and at home. And we will begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now I would ask for a few moments of silence so that we may remember all of our troops who served here and abroad in Iraq and Afghanistan, and for all those who have given their lives for our country. Thank you. Now, the first item on our agenda is to approve the minutes of December 22.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of December 22.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, not opposed, the motion carries.
Do you have another copy of the agenda?
Here, I thought I put it right on your table, my dear.
Oh, sorry, you're right, you absolutely did, thank you.
All right, and the next item of business is to reorganize the Board of County Commissioners. Each year, on the new year, we always elect a chairman and a vice chairman. So I would ask for a motion for chairman.
I would, I'm sorry, I was looking, I would put forward Bill Doherty to be chair.
And I will second that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And you will accept the nomination.
But I have certain conditions.
Don't ask for speech, man.
No speech, no speech. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none opposed, motion.
If I may, may I capture that, that you voted to elect Bill Doherty as chair of the county commissioners until the first meeting day of January 2012.
Correct.
So I have a whole slew, I just want to read through.
That's right, yes, keep us on track there, Maggie, please.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Bill.
Thank you very much.
And we're not changing seats.
Okay, well, next year.
He couldn't possibly move from this seat.
Well, I've been on the seat here for four years.
I can help him.
You and Barbara.
The big garbage can lady.
All right, now we need a motion for vice chair, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I would nominate you for vice chair.
Oh, there you go. Sure, I second that.
Well, I'm sorry, you're the chairman, I have to think I'm not running the meeting anymore.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So with that having been done, the appointment of the county clerk, and I will ask that we defer the appointment of the county clerk, an assistant county clerk.
It might be a good time to have a discussion if you want, but we could certainly defer it.
Okay, well, I think that in terms of discussion, we have talked about, and we do have on record Scott's intention to resign, and that it is time to look at that, and I would open it up for, do you have any suggestions as to what?
Well, I would like to discuss a little bit more about what the county clerk would do in regards to serving the county commissioners. Is there a difference, you know, there was discussion on whether, you know, who was going to be sworn in, on the assembly, who could do that, is there, should we look at a difference of service in that role, or is there an inherent difference in service where you would want?
My experience with the county clerk, just speaking from the time that I've been here, is that the county clerk is the one that verifies the acts that we make and also signs off on the ordinances that we have, and then takes care of whatever transmission has to be done to higher authority. In addition, the clerk also takes care of matters with regard to election of the assembly delegates.
Mm-hmm.
That, I think, is essentially what the duties of our clerk do.
Yes, basically, he records the votes, records any ordinances that are done, notarizes them, those types of kind of ceremonials, not the right word, but...
Technically, we notarize our own because we have our...
But they're the ones that certify that you're, you've taken that action, basically.
Yes.
And then the issue, yeah, then there is that one electoral function that they have, that they deal with the assembly of delegates, making sure that the papers have been submitted, making sure that the signatures are in, and all the pieces that need to be in, every two years for the...
Assembly.
For the assembly of delegates.
So it's really just a matter of swearing in and chip making sure that the election process is going well for them and even for us, is it not right?
Yeah, it's not even the swearing in, Scott does the swearing in as his clerk of courts function, so it's a little bit different than that.
So will he be swearing them in somewhere?
Yes, that was one of the things we discussed.
Scott will be, yes.
He would continue to do that.
Yeah, he'll continue to do that. I mean, my recommendation, since we have, we will be having a new clerk of the assembly, is, Scott made reference that the charter allows, it says you may, appoint the clerk of the assembly as the county clerk. Bob Troy has raised that issue, I don't think it's a fatal issue, that there may be an appearance every two years, that there's this conflict out there if something should happen with the election process, so there is that issue. I have spoken to another elected official here at the county, Jack Mead, and asked him if he would be willing to be the county clerk, and he certainly is willing, although he's somewhat reluctant, and my recommendation would be is for this year, this first maybe year, where you have a new assembly clerk that's getting their feet wet in that position and kind of finding their way there, maybe we have Jack, who's very familiar with what the county does, serve as the county clerk at least for a period of time while this new assembly clerk, and then a year from now, if we wish to make the assembly clerk, the county clerk, we could certainly do that, I don't think there's a fatal flaw with the election process there, but...
Maybe Dan Stacey's role come in on this, how could she...
No.
So he has the same issue that Scott has, and Scott's, one of his prime concerns, and I agree with it 100%, is he is a state employee, this is what...
I see what you're saying, okay, so they're state...
The old history, of course, is state, court employees used to be county employees, so, and this has kind of evolved from that. When court employees and county employees were exactly the same, the clerk of courts of the superior court was the county clerk, and it made perfect sense organizationally, and it didn't matter because they were all paid out of the county's coffers. Now Scott has this issue where he's a state employee, and he really can't be doing county functions on state time, so you run into that issue with anyone who serves in a state capacity, and that's all the court employees.
So really, Jack would just be kind of holding that seat if we needed him in the interim until we figure out how we want to...
He'd be doing those functions, that's, you know, that's my recommendation, he'll do those functions, and then if we choose later to make the assembly clerk, the county clerk, we can certainly do that.
Okay, I would suggest that, and I hear this recommendation, but I would suggest that we take Scott up on his offer to swear in the assembly on Wednesday, he's already sworn me, and that the appointment still be deferred until next week so that he can perform that function this Wednesday.
And it'd be good, I think, to have Jack here, so if that's what you guys wish to do, we'll invite Jack in next Wednesday.
And maybe suggest that he do it for a year, that it be a longer appointment, and that would give us time to work it out, and that way it would be called to our attention that next year that's up on the appointment list.
Okay, if you're all in agreement.
Maggie has a question.
I just want to make just point of clarification, Scott Nickerson serves as the clerk until this Wednesday, 2011.
Scott Nickerson, it's like Bill's, he serves until the next person is sworn.
Then do I need to adjust the vote, does the vote, good, bad, or indifferent specifically it gave the date?
There is no vote today, they're not doing anything.
I know, but last year's vote went to, that's what my point is, I'm just raising it, that last year's vote had it to a date certain, does that matter?
I believe, I believe I used the chair's prerogative of asking for a deferment for that vote.
Well, I think then you do have to take that vote.
Right, see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, the issue with using the vote, and this is where I have, is you shouldn't have a date certain, it's till the next person is sworn.
I did, but I agree with that, but that's not how we did it last year, it wasn't till the first, the county commissioners meeting in January, the first Wednesday of January 2011, so his term expires.
And this being Monday and not Wednesday, that was also another issue, since we meet...
Well, I think you just need to extend it to...
That's what I'm getting at. So we extend it to, I would make a motion to January 12.
Okay.
But if we're going to meet with, oh, are we going to meet with Jack on that day, on January 12?
Yeah, that'll be next Wednesday, that'll be a week from this Wednesday, which will be your next meeting.
Then I move that we extend it to January 12, 2011.
I second.
Okay, any discussion, hearing now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Now, for the other, for the other items that are here, I only see three of the items here, I thought we had...
Maggie has a whole list.
I have a list, if you're ready to go through them, I can read them.
No, actually, Bill, on the second page.
They list some bullet points here, but your next, right, your next one is the position, you need to appoint a representative to the Barnstable County Human Services Advisory Council. Right now it is Sheila Lyons.
I have been on this amount, I'd be happy to continue, unless you would like to?
No, I, no.
And by the way, thank you very much for, you know, for going to the homeless Memorial Day, I really appreciated you representing us there.
Oh, I was happy to be there.
Okay, and unfortunately, I had some transportation issues to worry about.
Yes, we all know.
So thank you very much for, you know, representing us there, so, okay, so Sheila, will be, continue, okay, the Cape and Islands Workforce Board. Now, I have been on that for several years, and every once in a while, it's good to look at a change, and I was wondering, Sheila, if you'd be interested in doing that.
I would be happy in doing that.
Yeah, I think you'll like David.
I do, I know David, and I think we get along well.
He's one of your supporters, if I remember correctly, so you ought to slide right in there, and you'll find that, and the relationships that are, you know, that are involved there will be ones that, you know, you are the appointing authority, you know, and that could be something that you might want to think about.
No, I think it would be interesting.
No, that's...
Great, so Sheila will be the Cape and Islands Workforce Investment Board, and you might, if you'd be kind enough to notify David Augustine of that change.
Everybody will be notified, okay.
Just, I have a question on that, because that, is that specify the chair, you have to designate chair?
In his capacity as chairman, Bill delegated his authority.
I have been delegated that responsibility before. Okay, on the Cape Light Compact, I have an interest in continuing that, unless one of you have some interest in that. The Economic Development Council, that's...
You need to move, I'm voting on them, what's that?
Yeah, we have to move about the Cape Light Compact, you have to vote on that.
Oh, wait, well, okay, then...
Then I guess we have to vote on the...
How long have you served on the...
Well, can we do them at the end all at once?
Yeah.
I'd like to stay on the...
On the EDC.
All right, have fun. While we're doing it, before we get to the rest of it, because some of this stuff is kind of big, I'd like to do the Cape Cod Commission.
Yes, I was going to suggest that, yeah, it's very interesting, it's a lot of work, but you learn a lot.
Yeah.
And I've been on it for two years, and I thought it's been a great experience.
That's why I didn't opt for the human services, that's a big one, too.
It is.
That's a huge one.
Yeah.
If we don't, if you don't mind jumping down to the Cape Cod Commission.
Oh, absolutely.
Because it kind of got to the EDC and the Commission.
And by the way, it is very important for all of us to have a familiarity with the Commission.
I absolutely, yeah, I think it's, I think it's important, I think you'll rotate a lot of these stuff.
And while we're doing that, just on the retirement board, you actually voted me to a four-year term, two years ago.
Yeah, it's concurrent, usually with your term, in change.
All right, those are the only two things I had to say at the moment.
So that's, so you're already on the advisory, we didn't even get to vote on it, right?
Cape Cod Commission and the retirement board.
And you wanted the EDC.
Yeah.
Yeah, and see, AmeriCorps, who's been on...
I've been on AmeriCorps.
And you've been on AmeriCorps.
Have you done AmeriCorps?
I think I did it the first year, but I can't say that I was as active as I could have been.
I wasn't either, so...
I might have to draw the straw, I've never been on it.
Okay, I would go along with that.
You?
Bill.
Yeah, okay.
I think after, see, after, you know, 10 years ago, I voted against it, so I guess it's a good time.
Sheila, do you want to stay as the alternate then?
That would be fine.
Okay, Cape Cod Municipal Health Group, Maggie has done that for us, is that, you are identified as being on that?
I'm on this, I represent the county and the steering committee.
And that's as well, it should be, Maggie.
All right, the National Seashore Advisory Council, you live in the neighborhood, are you going to continue to live in the neighborhood?
Yes, I am, I am continuing, and that's, that's something I would like to keep, I like that.
And Bill Clark is the alternate?
And Bill Clark is the alternate.
All right, and then the Cooperative Extension Advisory Council, I've been on that for a year, so they only meet about once a year, but I have enjoyed being on it, do any of you have any interest in that?
I don't have a problem doing that.
Would you like to do it?
Yeah, I like the cooperative.
Well, I mean, I'm just, you know, count of the S's on you.
You'll get to know Leo in a different way.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, well, that's even better, because just...
I went to his house for breakfast on Christmas Eve Day.
I know, I regret it, I couldn't...
That was fun, he just invites everybody to go for breakfast.
I know.
Who's serving?
Okay, on the extension, you are?
I will.
All right.
And the retirement board, really?
Children's Cove. As me, I'll stick with that.
You're going to take Children's Cove.
And I'd like to continue on the MPO, unless one of you had an interest in that.
Okay, I have an interest in it, but we don't have alternates.
No.
But in fact, I read the recent, I was on the MMA website yesterday looking for information, and I found that they really want to strengthen that MPO, and they want more people to be really involved in it.
Well, I would tell you that the group here on the Cape is very active, and we don't, you know, suffer, matter of fact, I've gotten to...
Unless we can attend anytime we want, if we want to just sort of know what's going on.
Please do, because one of the, one of the things that is lacking at the MPO is that although I try to represent both the lower Cape and, you know, and the county commissioners, there is a need for more people to, you know, to understand that that is the conduit for federal money for, you know, for funding.
For funding.
You know, on matters regarding transportation, and it's, to me, it's, you know, it's something that I think is very important.
And transportation's very big in the Commission.
I'm going to move the appointments as we suggested.
All right, let's just review them so we all know what we've done. Okay, so Sheila will be the Human Service Advisory Council on the Workforce Board, I will be in the Cape Light Compact, Pat will be in the Economic Development Council, I will be on AmeriCorps Advisory Council, you got that, Maggie?
Yeah.
All right, and then Maggie will be the Municipal Health Group, Pat will be in the Cape Cod Commission, Sheila will be the Seashore Advisory Council and the Cooperative Extension, Pat will be Retirement Board, Pat will be the Children's Cove, and I will be on the MPO.
So move.
Second.
Second, any discussion, hearing now, all those in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opinions, any extensions, thank you very much.
Say aye.
Okay, then the next item is reports from...
We probably should stop the budget.
I would defer, that's right, yes.
Come back and do the budget.
Very good, you guys finished on time.
Well, actually, we could vote the summary of actions, though, so we could start siding...
Does anybody have any questions about that? Let's see, oh, we're also, on this, we're to reappoint the advisory board members for Children's Cove.
We just did.
Just did.
Kat's going to do it.
You got them all, Bill?
No, there are other advisory board members.
No, we only have one representative to you, the other ones have terms, and they come up throughout the year, and they serve for, they're staggered throughout the year over a period of years.
Okay, thank you very much, and with that, I guess we, I guess I'll take a motion to...
I'll move the summary of actions.
Go second.
I second.
Any discussion, hearing now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any pros, any extensions, thank you very much, that is a vote. Okay, and now we will go to the Department of Health and Environment.
Who needs a budget?
I do.
Sheila, do you need a budget?
Yes, please.
Very good, you get the gold star.
That's exactly right, because I brought mine to do my work on, it's sitting in my office.
That's what makes Monday so nice, because Sunday night, you have time to really get organized, and for the next day, and put all your stuff together, is that right?
Would you like to meet on that?
That's what it's for, don't you remember your school days? With that free-floating anxiety, did I study that test?
It was cramming for the exam, which I did last night.
Changing the meetings, because there's a value to our meetings, being on a different day relative to news publications, so we should think about that.
Especially since the only reporter that report for us are the Falmouth and the Barnstable...
I want you to know, the yes, that the Falmouth Enterprise has a session called Region.
And had it for many years, by the way.
Well, for a while, yes, for quite a while, and I enjoy reading it, because it keeps me up to date on things about the county that I may not know about, but I think it's really valuable to get our message out there, so I think we could talk about that at another meeting, about our timing.
And I think we ought to put that, as a matter of fact, one of the things that's going up at a later time is the importance of all of us talking on a regular basis about what should be agenda items, and I believe that that would be at the top of my list, to, you know, to talk about meetings at times that are convenient for people to hear more about us, including, you know, meeting publication dates. Okay, so with that, welcome. Hi.
Good morning, George.
Good morning, George. George, just for the record, could you add, by yourself, in your life, tip of the country?
George Rutherford, Chief County Health Officer, Barnstable County Health and Environment.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any specific questions?
I just have one question under the first paragraph on tasks, SARA, what is S-A-R-A Title III requirement?
SARA Title III is really the Right to Know Act, that means in those places that store hazardous materials to certain volumes, they're required to register with the feds as well as compile information for fire departments, so that the community will know what's stored in their community, how it's stored, and whether it's stored safely or not. The fire departments use it, of course, for their, for the entry information, if there's a fire at the location, what they're going to be dealing with. So we started that program a while ago, it's primarily under Sean O'Brien, but Amy Wallace administers it, and it works with all of those now 300-plus sites around the Cape that store chemicals, and the community has a right to know what's in an able.
That brings up an issue that's connected to this, when they met at a different day other than Wednesday, I was the, I guess, the ad hoc liaison to this REPC committee.
A R E P C.
That was very important to me, because I found out more about what was going on. Unfortunately, their, I guess, their meetings continue on Wednesday, but I think that, you know, for the sake of going forward, we've all finished the ICS, you know, training, the incident command training, and it might be useful for one of us to think about being in continuing connection. I think that you had said, for example, that you were interested in representing us with the fire chiefs.
Me?
You remember, on CMed.
Oh, on CMed, oh, yes, yes.
Well, there is sort of, there's sort of an indirect connection between CMed and what they do and...
And this, and R E P C, it's true.
Right, so I was wondering if you might think about being, you know, being the go-to person for that, so if something comes up, we'd have somebody that would be keeping in touch with them on a regular basis.
What time do they meet on Wednesday?
Usually they meet at 1:00.
2:00 on Wednesday afternoon.
Once a week, I mean, once a month?
Yes.
Once a month.
And usually down at the Dennis...
Fires, the police station in Dennis.
What, Wednesday of the month?
It's usually the second or third, I can't remember.
If it's the second, there'd be no conference.
And if we talk about changing our day, then...
Well, even the third, we could meet later, but, yeah.
So could you let me know what you...
Sure, absolutely, Sean O'Brien would be your point person to know exactly when any of the meetings are...
You probably already get the notification, I bet you're on the list, the REPC, maybe not, but we'll add you to it.
Yeah.
But I think it's important for us to show that we're, you know, that we're connected with it in some way, not that we would be running it.
Well, and something you started, so it's really...
Yeah, when I worked in Plymouth, I was, I worked on emergency preparedness, which is a little different, but not really, because that's, it's a regional emergency preparedness, right?
Yes, what's really sort of shaped after you started this years ago, is that it's really folded in nicely with the public health emergency sort of efforts. It overlaps a little bit in that the jurisdictional overlap, public health goes into, for instance, Falmouth and both islands, whereas the REPC does not include Falmouth, but does include Nantucket.
Okay, so anyway, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, that's okay with me.
Okay, and do you have any other questions?
No, I thought maybe George might want to make a presentation.
Um, I'm just, I'm sort of looking to the future here, and I haven't gone through every one of those, but, you know, we have, we have a lot of water, water monitoring solutions, I think you and I have talked about this, and, you know, George has come into the discussions of the herbicide management, vegetation management, and I think that one thing that I, that we need to help George pursue this year is looking for grants or funding for beefing up now that we're going to be able to expand that lab up there, to have the equipment and instruments available to help us do a better, you know, to do a more in-depth and minute look at our water system so that we can control this, so I think that that's an effort that we have to try to support and hopefully come through with, you know, and since there is this need for what is going on in our water, although we do test it, we water, we test the septic systems, and we test, you know, the pond, you know, there's all of that information that comes on, and you also test the beaches throughout the summer, and, but for us to be able to really have the ability to test those, you know, to have that record right here, is something that I would like to, as the county move in the direction of doing.
I believe we do have a direction.
We do, but there is, you know, as technology advances, the instruments become more precise and more expensive, and the testing becomes more expensive, but if we had some of those capabilities in-house, it would be less expensive for everyone, and it would be a service, really, to the region.
Could I just make a suggestion, maybe George has a presentation he wants to make?
I think I'm around.
Do you want us to just comment on your, because I have, I don't have, I mean, I could comment on a lot of different things with questions, but I don't want to just go through it unless you have...
What's your pleasure, Julie?
Well, I can give a broad overview, particularly those items who I'm asking for some increased support.
I would find that helpful before I get in, because you may answer my questions before, and maybe I open the door.
Are you all agreeing, agree with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, the first sort of wave of increases asked for relate to the REPC, a regional emergency planning. As you know, you set this up, and there's been quite a bit of participation from those towns, and Nantucket and Cape Cod, and some interest even with increasing the participation in Falmouth, but what you've really set in motion there is a pretty comprehensive emergency planning committee. You've taken care of the SARA titles, which is really the Right to Know, the next thing is all hazards response, which includes hurricanes and, of course, hazardous materials. One of our requests relates to the whole response to natural disasters, and that is those funds necessary to allow us to open shelters. There is now in place on Cape Cod a regional sheltering plan, it calls for regional shelters, rather than every town setting up, to more efficiently use the resources, particularly the medical resources, those security resources needed, the resources needed down as pets, they've all been put into a nice regional plan, and we know that as a hurricane or storm, natural disasters plan to come up the coast or wherever it does come from, at some point, somebody's got to pull the trigger to say activate it, because it's usually done prior to the event. You have a regional emergency planning executive committee, which I set, a fire chief, George Baker, Dennis Police Chief sits on, a health agent sits on. When we think about pulling the trigger, we are always thinking, my God, if we pull it too early, and this does not get declared a public emergency, emergency through the state, then none of those things which we set in motion are going to be reimbursable. That is bound to happen, it's bound to happen because the Cape sticks out in the middle of the ocean, and we're going to have some issues when the rest of state might not, and... And this means that some minimal costs need to be covered. We're calling, we're opening four regional shelters, or even two. That means janitorial staff's called in, which the towns, the town where the regional shelter sits in is going to be expected to bear the cost, or they're going to start looking around and saying, who pulled this trigger? I think to have a modest reserve fund for that, which is the $15,000 we've asked for, is adequate enough to cover those things that might happen when we call or pull the trigger too soon. It's happened in the past, or yeah, I think it was Hurricane Earl, when it opens, you open some shelters and maybe you don't need them, but you're sure glad they were open and ready to go. I think it would also be an expression to those agencies that work with us, the DART teams, which take care of all the pets, the fire, the police, the American Red Cross, the medical reserve corps, which, of course, is in-house to us, all of those folks, when they mobilize, I think they would feel supported to know that this modest sort of set aside would be good in case they open a shelter and it's inappropriate, or we open a shelter and it might not be appropriate. So that's where that is going. We did incur some costs in one storm last year, where we opened up a regional shelter and the storm just didn't hit. It just didn't, didn't come to fruition. It was good to have it open, but when you have two or three or five people walk into the shelter, that's great for those five people, but you've mobilized a lot of people for those five. So that's, that's where we're coming from in that. The other piece that is going...
Excuse me, did you want us to ask questions on each point?
That's totally up to you.
Your pleasure.
Well, I just wanted to comment that I was really impressed with the way the Falmouth emergency people handled, handled a week ago, this past weekend, a Christmas weekend, with conference calls at nine in the morning, conference calls at three in the afternoon with police, fire, emergency, town manager, all of that, because a lot of people were without heat. And, and how that was all handled, and to the point of hoping not to have to open a shelter unless they were really necessary. And as it turned out, and NSTAR was all part of that, that all of that communication that went on, at least among public officials, and back to the public, you know, if you had power, prevented the shelter from being opened, because even the police had a list of people who they needed to contact because they had wellness issues, and they had notified the police. So they were able to contact people who maybe were alone and, and didn't have a way of knowing what to do. But anyway, I was impressed with the, with the planning that went into that, and that's all part of this.
This is the exact model the REPC works on.
Yep, and it worked really, really well.
You'll see many calls, many calls Christmas Day. As a matter of fact, Sean was on the phone with, you know, the National Weather Service and all the other police and fire, the executive committee to say, what are we going to do with this one? And we didn't pull the trigger, which was good, we didn't need to.
Can I ask a question? George, would some of these costs be reimbursable either by MIMA or FEMA?
Yes, if there's a declared emergency, they're all reimbursed.
They're all reimbursed.
And if you reach a certain threshold with the Red Cross, their costs are reimbursed. But what can happen is you open the shelter, it doesn't happen, and the town where the regional shelter just happens to be located gets stuck with a bill.
Gets stuck, yeah.
And this, you know, you could say, well, you know, that's the law for the draw. But if we, we adopt that sort of posture, a town could say, well, what advantage then is it to me, to me, to host this regional shelter for these other towns which, you know, have not been contributing or don't contribute? So we feel that in order to encourage the regionality of particularly the regional sheltering piece, which I think is very important, because when you can move, you know, 200 dog cages rather than, to one location, rather than saying, okay, what five schools are out there that we're going to drop certain dog cages, and then, then you need people to sit there and wait and take them in and do what really needs to be done.
Is there a way that the towns might also think about doing some sort of, you know, fund a contribution? Is that how that is?
The REPC is discussing it with the town, but they ought to be thinking about it.
So they all put in like, say, a thousand bucks or something like this, so that there's a reserve, and, and ours would sort of match that reserve, and then if it's, if it's reimbursable, if something does happen, hopefully it doesn't, then everybody gets their money back? And if not, at least that's, that's a shared, shared pot, so to speak, an insurance pot?
The REPC is moving in that direction.
Good.
And actually, the REPC facilitates payments of MIMA back to the towns in those situations where they are reimbursable. They just did reimburse the towns for staff that actually went off Cape because they use our resources and our, our team. There's an incident management team that is under the REPC that they actually used off that water emergency in Boston.
Yeah, I agree that maybe the, the towns could contribute, although this year, I'm not sure.
Well, I think it's a fund.
But I think this is truly a regional, I mean, it's a regional shelter for, for more than one town.
Absolutely.
And, and I think it does show, it does give stature, if you will, I guess, or for lack of a better word, presence, position to, to the county to say that this is a regional issue, and we're going to help support this as well, because we, we want this to work in this manner. It's better to work on a regional basis.
It has been a model throughout the state.
So if we can find the, the resources to do it, I think we should support it.
Yeah, and what I would do is what I'd recommend that we set this up as a special revenue fund. And so you would need to put 15,000 in the budget for that particular fund to fund it initially, and then you'll either use it or not use it, and you'll either get reimbursed or you won't get reimbursed. And there's no kind of guarantees on it, but you'll have it, and if you don't use it, you'll have it kind of continually.
In the next year.
And if you get reimbursed, you put that money in, back in the fund.
Well, the evidence is that when Governor Patrick had declared an emergency that didn't happen, I think the people of Massachusetts were better off because he had stepped up and at least showed that he was trying to anticipate something that might happen. And during this last one, he definitely demonstrated that he put us in a good place. And I think we have evidence in New York City and in New Jersey that the difference between somebody that shows up to shovel your walk and at least is giving the appearance of being helpful, and I, and I think that that's an important place for us to have visibility, because at the end of the day, we're supposed to be concerned and proactive with regard to trying to help people out.
And you also don't want to put the decision-makers on whether they open a shelter or not open a shelter in a position where they're worried about, well, if I don't have that $1,000 and this thing doesn't hit, then I'm screwed, because somebody's going to have to pay that bill.
Yeah, I'd like to, if I may, ask another question with this. Say we approve $15,000 extra to have a reserve for this, and the year goes by and nothing happens, what's going to happen with that reserve?
It stays, the 15,000 stays.
Do we, do we add another 15,000 to do it the next year, or is that just going to...
You wouldn't have to.
But we can just have it sit for now? Okay.
Just rolls over?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do what we wish, okay.
Yeah, that's why if we put it in a special revenue fund, you don't have to worry about appropriating it every year.
Right.
Or it sits there, if you spend five and it happens to be declared emergency, you get the five back.
Say to George, we approved for the release of that, and that's done, okay.
Okay.
So then, is there, is there something else you...
There was, also related to the REPC was an increase in our equipment repair budget of $5,000. This is primarily for the signage. We, the REPC had purchased with grant monies and other funds, signs direct people to and away and for, towards sheltering if they need it. These signs are used regionally, they're moved, they're a very mobile asset that's called upon many times, and they're in need of repair. So we've done the original, I mean, a preliminary assessment that $5,000 is what we need for the repair of these. Primarily that's replacement of batteries, because they run on batteries, of course, they're rechargeable, but those batteries, even the long-cycle ones die down, and they're in need of some repair, certain repairs to the trailers themselves. But these are notify people clinics, notify people what roads to use, what not to use, depending on, you know, who needs them. And I believe just about every town has used them. They use them for their flu clinics, they use them to direct people away from accidents, things like that, or some of the fairs, like the Cranberry Festival or the Seaside Festival, to direct traffic in that way. They're very mobile, used during emergencies, so that was the request in that regard. Thank you.
Do they have a solar component, or are they generated?
No, they're, they run, they recharge right off your battery, but they don't have a solar component.
And actually, given the load that's on it, I don't know if a solar component would really support it.
It might, they usually fairly bright lights, because they're used and anticipated to be used in sort of foggy or smoky conditions at some point.
But it's one of those trailers you see parked on the side of the road that tells you that there's an accident at exit six.
Big signs, that's right. Exactly, correct.
Yeah, some of them do have solar chargers.
Yeah, they do. The steamship has some that are solar.
I think those signs are smaller.
Well, these are, these are not huge mines, so they probably could have a...
I'm wondering if there's any grant, well, I don't know.
We'll look.
Yeah.
We'll look at it.
But you still need money to fix all it.
Yeah, that's right.
What next?
The largest elephant in the room is the instrument, of course. We've done a little homework on this one, and sort of weaved a little, little discussion in there, yes. The discussion goes as follows. We have instruments in the laboratory, and we have been doing perchlorate analysis for the last couple of years. It's a good revenue generator, but it also staves off the cost of our monitoring out at the Fire Trending Academy for perchlorate. There are only a few labs certified in this area to do that, and so we've pretty much garnered a lot of the business. As instruments go, there's going to be a new method required for those, so we may have to retire that one instrument. The good news is that instrument can also be used for nitrate analysis. Nitrate analysis instrument in the lab is now going out of phase as far as its support. They don't support that old model anymore. So we could move this perchlorate instrument right in. Then we're naked for perchlorate. We don't know how to do it, because the method calls for this type of instrument. And so we looked at this as being sort of multifaceted. If we get an instrument that can do the perchlorate, we can also do the pharmaceuticals, selective pesticides, and place ourselves in a position to be able to answer some of those questions, which you've heard not only from me or from your constituents, Silent Sprang and others, saying, what about the pharmaceuticals, personal care products in our drinking water? That instrument is a very sophisticated instrument. It's actually two mass specs on the tail end of a liquid chromatograph. So it's LCMSMS, it's called quadrupole MS. I'm assured by a laboratory director that the operation of the instrument is well within his grasp, and so that's why the request is there. It's going to cover us on perchlorate, increase our capability. I think the, the sort of financial plan, although I'm not a financial planner, nor do I pretend to be in real life, but the figures I gave you are fairly conservative, expressing the money that we have in hand, we have some DEP grants. I presently farm all my pharmaceutical work out to UMass, Dr. Rackhouse Laboratory. That would be brought in-house, a round of grants, which we just received, a new round of grants for 2011, which included some pharmaceutical work to the tune of about $35,000 to $40,000. So that would be guaranteed. I don't know what the market for the general public will be out there for this. Will somebody in Wellfleet who's, you know, feeling depressed all the time say, maybe it's in my water, and get the water, or feeling very up all the time and saying, gee, one of my neighbors is using some enhanced drugs?
So would this up, you know, people can bring their water samples to the health department, have them tested to see what's going on there? So would this, and that cost about $30 now to do?
Yes, correct.
And would this up the fee for that, since we can become war?
That's a good question. The analysis right now costs me about $1,200 a sample through USGS Colorado. I'm anticipating that the University of Massachusetts cost can be somewhere around $800, though I did not negotiate a price with them, they are the only game in town. We would anticipate that very conservatively, a $500 fee would recover consumables and pay for the analyst's time and work a little toward paying for the instrument. That would be, of course, a subsidized rate. Commercial rate right now, $1,200, minimum $1,200 for the radius.
So we would charge the individual requesting that, that more in-depth study of their water, $500 as opposed to, is this within the safety?
I had not set a price on that, but I suspect it would go as we do all of our analysis. For those citizens of Barnstable County who support us through this structure that we have, then that cost would be subsidized. If somebody was to come from Off Cape with a sample, then the rate would be different. The rate would more mirror a commercial rate, because we primarily serve boards of health and the people in Barnstable County, but we maintain instrumentation that can serve wider range. For instance, we have off-Cape rates for perchlorate, which are different than what we charge a purveyor of water or a private citizen here in Cape Cod.
And by having these instruments, would it make us more unique in comparison to the, say, the geographical radius around us, where you could market this to Plymouth County, into the New Bedford area, those areas that might be close to us or even beyond if they don't have the instruments, and be sort of a competitor in that market?
We follow the same models as we do with perchlorate. We do perchlorate from all eastern Massachusetts. They ship them here, we do them. As I said, at, probably within the next year, that will have to change, because we won't have the instrument that will allow for the verification of it. We will have the instrumentation, they will still allow ICs to use, be used to do an initial, and if you hit, they're going to say, we want a verification using mass spectrophotometry, and we will not be able to do that. So at some point, people are going to say, hmm, if I take it there and I get a hit, I got to get it confirmed, so why don't I just go to where I can get it confirmed?
So, and in the long run, we would be saving, because we're paying for those tests when we send them out to UMass or...
Oh, absolutely.
So that money would be now here?
Okay. Now, let's see, you, I like the financial analysis that you put in here. What's use for life after four years?
The instrument, it's very difficult with analytical instruments to project a life, because a life is not only how long will a machine run, but how long will it be involved, will it be used? I would anticipate that this is somewhere around eight years.
Okay. So your payback of one of this is at somewhere between years two and years three?
The absolute worst-case scenario, absolute worst-case scenario is four years. And that's, yeah, okay, somebody from Timbuktu discovers that you don't need a mass spec, you could hold it up to light, you just need this special light. And, and we never know, because those methods change. Mass spectrophotometry, however, has been around for a long time.
Gee, even one else studied it in college 34, 50 years ago, it was in...
It's very well-known. The sensitivities have really increased because of the LC front end of it, and it actually is not one mass spec, it's two. It aligns that molecule up just so you can tell exactly what it is.
Does this qualify for a capital...
Yeah, we do this under a capital case.
And is the, is the price for payback include your debt service? Would you need that?
I don't know what the debt service would be, so I did not include it, helping.
I would say there's a little bit different way to look at it. You're going to have to run those analyses anyways, so you can either do it in-house or ship it somewhere else to do it. So that's kind of the other piece of this as well, is they're going to have to be done, so you can kind of pay somebody else $1,200 to do it, or buy the machine and maybe do it for eight to 500.
Right, and we, and in the long run, we'll start breaking even and having it pay for its...
What is our experience right now in terms of our exposure as far as these $1,200 or $500 fees? How many, how many tests have we seen?
Well, I am right now doing $35,000 in the last grant. This cycle, I just shipped the samples out to UMass. I have another grant, which is about $35,000. I don't know, as I said, how many samples I'll get from that, because when I go to a university setting for this, I, so I put this delicately, I work with the researcher to decide whether he really could use this for publication and therefore increase, it has, it has a little value to it that's not seen in the bottom line. So I, I express to them that they can use all of our data, everything, because, you know, we...
We are not the University of Massachusetts to not, are not reluctant to share information.
We don't have intellectual...
So we would give them anything they want and beyond that, all the concurrent data for nitrogen, whatever they needed. So I guess the correct term would be somewhat of a bartering that goes on, and there's never a price decided until they figure out what their real fixed costs and consumables are and their staff time, but it never ends up being... up being even close to what I have to pay UL or somebody $1,200 a sample, or what.
I have a question about you're using, you know, underwriters' laboratory because in my experience, underwriters' laboratory was just to look at safety issues and not performance issues. So what is the, you know, what is the use of?
I don't know because I don't use them.
Okay.
I, I would much, I would use a university lab for this analysis simply because a lot of those small, of those compounds that we're looking for have no determined method for them. Some of them do. There's a, there's a 1694 method. However, I need a researcher who just isn't looking at this like, hey, I'm getting 500 bucks or 1,000 bucks at the end of this. I need a researcher that looks at another peak in there and says, there's something else there, George. Could you give me two more samples? We need to find out what that is because they may find the compound that everybody else is missing, and they're looking for it because it's their way to fame and glory. So.
That's very important.
So I don't use UL.
It's very important, and I think that, you know, the viewer should know that one of the issues that's come up in, you know, in the vegetative management studies is the, the understanding of how much the inert materials in, you know, that are part of the, let's say, the process of transferring the, you know, the active ingredients of the herbicide into, you know, into the water system, you know, are affecting, you know, its toxicity or, you know, its contribution to toxicity. So I think that's all very important to look, to take that extra look to find out what's there.
And we don't know. We give the researcher whatever they want as far as sample, as far as an understanding of what processes they're looking at. Dr. Rackhouse gracious enough to listen to me. We actually looked, talked to Woods Hole. We've, we've been trying to draw with any of our programs, some of the cooperation with the universities, simply because we know that that's where a lot of the real active research takes place, that we can take advantage of.
Okay. Any other questions on this, if you have any?
No.
Well, you mentioned in one of, in your last sentence of your first paragraph that, that the department would like to position itself to conduct these analyses to the public and to further the research on ways to mitigate the problems associated with wastewater disposal practices. So kind of how is that going to do that? Are you kind of, like, for instance, you're familiar with the Open Cape, you know, and the Strategic Information Office where all this kind of data. Is this kind, is this data that can be put into that, into that, onto that platform, that nest, that sort of Cape Cod data center that will help?
It's certainly that, but let me explain what I meant by that last sentence because it might not have been clear. At the test center, we look at ways to reduce contamination, various contamination, anywhere from nitrogen to bacteria. While we are engaged now in finding out low technological ways to remove pharmaceuticals, we believe that there are some very simple principles that if investigated, might yield some real fruit as far as low-tech ways to get rid of pharmaceuticals, that being drip dispersal systems, enhanced drip dispersal systems. So last year, we applied to the state for DEP for grant to actually do that. And out at the test center now, there's seven modules out there, seven different systems that we're investigating. This year, we don't have any of those results yet. We just sent our first set of samples to UMass. This year, DEP spec further with us. We said, look, if this is a simple way, what if it's even simpler? So we looked at another way and we submitted a grant and they said, fine, we'll take a look at it. I think we are mainly a very good resource for the state because we're the only ones really actively looking at onsite wastewater and the pollutant reductions from pharmaceuticals, personal care products. So we'll continue to do that. We'll continue to parlay the test center's abilities, and that's what I mean there. We'll research ways to reduce for the average homeowner because we've always felt from 1977, when the code was dump it in a pit, get it as far away as you can, as fast as you can. We did have some input into the change of the code, which says, no, bring it up, spread it out, let the soil work on it. The next step is to say, how far up, how spread out? Because nobody really knows. They're not doing that. It's, there's no money in it.
Or what else can you do with it?
That's right. Can you reuse it? When you reuse it, does it present a hazard? How do you reuse it? What do you do to treat it before you reuse it? Things like that.
Yeah. Again, I think, I mean, in relation to your question, you were talking about even the partnership with IBM now and the Water Excellence. All of this is data that would be brought together and not only be helpful to other people, but George would then have a lot of other data where you could have now models, you know, computer models that could help further your efforts and even grant efforts because you can take some of, put in different questions and put into different things of this.
The IBM thing brings up an interesting point. We are making a contribution to, to support that, the IBM participation.
You have a center of excellence.
Could this be viewed as a, you know, as a contribution in kind to that?
Well, I, I don't think, I don't know if it could be a contribution in kind, but I think that there's going to be data that will definitely be useful to other people.
I think that's right, but I think one of the things we need to look at when you're with the Cape Cod Commission is to perhaps find out whether or not the participation of the contribution of this data and the cost of developing it could be shared in that way of being part of the contribution that they're making to support that.
I think you answered the question, absolutely.
Can't hurt to ask.
That's right.
God gives you what you ask. Okay, what else? Any other questions on this?
No.
Moving on.
So those really outline, we have a lot of light-stone activities which I described in here, which I could go on for weeks.
Yes, we hit the big things first.
But those are the big items. We've asked for some modest increase in the public health nursing budget because we, we have realized that some investments in that area, when the federal government has vaccines available and things like that, allow us to be in a position to get them out. That with the Medical Reserve Corps, for instance, took advantage of all that, I forget, AAR money to buy vaccines, which were shingles vaccines. And some of the vaccines are very expensive to get out to people who couldn't afford it. We held the clinics right up top of the hill, or we went out and did them in some of the towns. But we've asked for some modest increase in the travel, that being in-state driving around travel to increase our visibility, and a modest increase, $1,000 for some supplies. We do anticipate this year, two sort of major efforts for education. One, of course, is to keep with the tick and lime, and the other is the skin safety, the sun safety. And we plan on rolling a little bit more out to the higher-risk groups in that area. We're developing a few more tools to get in to talk to the children about it, particularly tick and lime, but also the sun safety piece of it. We conducted with the use of some funding from DPH last year, and in turn, we did a program on the beaches and we believe that that had a lot of fruit to it. We actually could document the changes in risk, risk behavior as well as risk understanding. And so we're going to parlay that into future grants in that particular area because I always say on Cape Cod, there's, you know, three things will get you. An errant driver and you're not wearing your seatbelt. A tick will bite you and you won't find out you have Lyme and it's too late, or you'll get melanoma. So those three things, we place a lot of emphasis on. Well, two of them anyhow. Seatbelts, we don't.
Where are we with regard to the loss of Dave Simzer over, you know, in this, in the pursuit of all of this? Because that's a big hole. I know you work with Bill Clark to a great extent.
Yes. Those were huge lime green sneakers to fill with Dave Simzer. And we have recently met with Brenda Bullen, who chairs the task force, and Bill, and she'll probably be giving a presentation to you. But we've assured her and Bill of our continued commitment to beef up the educational outreach. Dave and Rita, who has retired from our staff but we've had public health nurses, they both were under the schools quite a bit.
Is that correct?
And Dave was more out to the industry folks, those at risk out there, and telling people how to tick-proof the yard, and he had, of course, the deer station. I think that Bill will explain all that to you. But we will maintain our commitment, public health nursing commitment, a large percentage of that to outreach for tick and lime because it's an insidious disease and most people get it and don't realize they have it. It's a tragedy. It's a tragedy, and we want to avoid as many of those as we can.
Okay. Is there anything else you have to question?
No, not right now.
I was looking at the wellness screening that you do. And you'd say that, you know, you measure the, you measure it by the number of screenings performed at any early disease, diseases that might be detected. But I guess my question, what resources do you have to do wellness screenings? And are you for towns or for?
Well, through the municipal health group. Of course, Maggie has a program, but we also perform them for municipalities, schools, or fire departments, police departments that don't have the municipal group doing their wellness piece. And with the fire departments, for instance, we focus a little bit more on those things that are sort of more risk to them. For instance, the bladder screening, which we implemented starting two years ago. We're getting a whole lot more requests in that category because it's a quick screening for bladder cancer. So the resources we have, of course, are the same that we use for the municipal health group screenings. We have the hearings, the skin analyzer, we have all of the, for blood pressure, sugar, the whole thing, and this bladder screening test. So that, and one public health nurse, and the nurses that do it by contract, both for Maggie's public health screenings, I call Maggie's, but they're the municipal group screenings, and the ones that we conduct on our own, that we find places that need it.
Is the Medical Reserve Corps possibly in, do they have an opportunity, or do you suggest that they could be useful as part of the screening?
They have been using, used as part of the screening, and we're going to integrate them a little bit more into the sun safety and the tick and lime. But we have used them in the past for those, particularly when our resources dry up a little bit, or if a town has a number of volunteers in the town that step to the plate and say, hey, we'd like to do this.
Well, I think it's very important because Reserve people only use it in an emergency and, you know, time goes by. And I found that, let's say, continuing engagement and involvement.
Sure. And we have, we've got, we've gotten them out during the vaccinations, as you've seen there. A lot of coordination has to be done around that. We use volunteers for that. The sun safety, they're out there all the time for the sun safety. We, we find that, in fact, that's why you may have seen, and Mark has graciously signed a paper to allow us to start an explorer group for, to engage younger people in the medical reserve corps piece. Because we find on the beaches, they don't listen to old friends like me. His skin is, you know, what is that you're wearing there? They listen to young kids that can come up to them and say, look, this is what's happening. This is what is.
I think that's wonderful because the AmeriGrande program, you know, not only helps people that they speak to, but it also helps them practice, you know, at an early age. Because I believe that that's where the, you know, where they're most vulnerable to the exposure.
Yeah, I'm just hoping that one or two of those explorers who wear CPR are around when I need it.
Anything else, George?
I have two other questions. On one of your lists, you talk about maintaining the ability to assist towns in monitoring the water and soil air at the decommissioned landfills.
Landfills, right.
These are cap landfills.
Yes, these are cap landfills. They're in the process of completing their capping. We do that for about 14 of the towns to some extent. Some is soil gas monitoring, which is really good program because no one wants to maintain that instrument, and we have one that goes around all the towns and does it because it's not something you use every year. You use it every quarter in most of the wells. So for them to maintain and certify and keep it calibrated, it's a great program in that regard. But we also do the groundwater monitoring in the wells near their closures. In some towns, we do soup to nuts. We take the samples, we analyze them, of course, that's the minimum service, and then we actually issue a report. We give a report. We fill in what they need for DEP. In other towns, their consultant does all the reporting for them, and we merely collect the samples and provide for them the data. We make sure in those instances that the town realizes the profit. In other words, we're not, they're not capping on to our cause and saying, well, no, nice analysis you did for $5. We're going to charge a town 10 for it. So we're careful to make sure that that doesn't go on. But it's, our department, as you know, is, is a regional model. It's called the cafeteria model. If a town wants us to do their landfill gas monitoring, but not their regular monitoring, we don't say, no, we, well, we do both.
And we charge a certain, we charge for each of these things, and then if you get the package, you get a better deal or something like that, right?
That's right. Monitoring is modern. We charge the municipal rate for a cent.
Any steps part of it because, you know, it's my, my observation that sometimes in order to get to an outcome that gives you a, let's say, a useful picture, that there are several tests that are, you know, absolutely required, is in presenting the package, do you present, you know, the importance of the individual parts?
We make sure that when we're engaged in an effort, they just don't come in and say, this is the only number we want from you, because we know that a number out of context can be misused.
Exactly.
So in all of the ones that we do, we sit down with the town, say, here's the suite of things we'll do. This is what we'll present to your consultant. And we would like to see the report so that we can validate and make sure that the information's been used.
I could just ask, who, who in the town, do you do this with the town administrator and then their health department people?
It's usually the DPW that's handling the landfills.
DPW, yeah.
But on occasion, we'll meet with the health department and say, you know, this is, for instance, in Wellfleet, you have folks.
It might always be good to have the town manager because they're the ones that are struggling with their budgets. And if they see firsthand the savings that they can have while they're with the DPW, DPW, you know, people get used to doing things a certain way, so it might be, but if you're looking at someone coming in and saying, you know, this actually fiscally makes sense, or, you know, George, if you could even do this, that even helps us no further how we can assist those towns, is help their budgets and also make that town manager aware of where they can have savings.
I might mention that in, in different towns, the DPW does have to go to the town manager in order to get support for the price of these things. So I believe that that conversation is held to a certain, you know.
I'm not saying it's not, but I'm just saying firsthand, when you're sitting there hearing it and then getting the whole enchilada, so to speak, you say, oh, wait a minute.
Well, if they use the public land, so the manager would probably be involved in any.
Right.
The other part to my question was, there seems to be more and more interest in towns putting solar arrays on their cap landfills. I know that's probably not in your bailiwick, but do, do they ever come to you for suggestions or advice or?
Not on the solar array piece.
Not on the solar.
They might come on the penetration of the cap.
The liner, right.
The liner?
Because.
Any kind of requirements, once they penetrate a liner that's capped in a landfill, they're probably monitoring the gases coming out of that. And we'd be involved at that point.
My last question.
Before you get, before you leave that, I'd like to point out that all of the arrays that have been suggested by the CIVC.
In our bid, yeah.
In their bid are all, are non-intrusive, non-invasive, non-penetrating.
Cap liners?
Well, they're actually, what do you call the bottom of that?
Yeah, you have to ask. They're ballast.
Ballast, okay, they're ballast. So therefore, they're not intrusive. However, that's one of the reasons why they've been able to go forward.
How do you like your new digs?
I love them. Thanks, Dave.
Everything working out well?
Yes, they are. DEP is, it's nice to have it downstairs.
It is very nice to have them there.
Because I can walk downstairs and ask a question. Otherwise, you'd have to ring the phone.
It's a good synergy.
They may want to stay there forever.
It is, and we're, in order to make up for the meeting room, we're doing some work in the west wing to take some of that space so that we can have a training room. Eventually, I think we would like to set up that training room as a possible EOC or during emergency because everything up there is on the generator. It's, it's built like a prison.
Tell people what EOC is. What is EOC?
For, during an emergency, it's the center of operations where you put all of your, sort of the key players together in order to divert resources, find out what the information is about the situation. But that's an emergency operating center. That's what it's for. And would eventually like to get it to that point and may start holding the regional REPC meetings in that, that place. So it'll be an alternate place from the. that, that place. So it'll be an alternate place from the Dennis Fire Department. Because we got, you know, some people traveling from outside of Cape, awesome.
Police Department.
Yeah, police department is what we mean. So we're hoping to be able to get that up and running. And, uh, then John Morse will have a nice training room also. So it will serve multi-purposes. And it's right off at Kendall Air's area up there.
Do you have any other questions?
Yeah.
I do, actually. Just money-wise. How's, uh, what do you expect for funding for the tobacco program?
Uh, I think it's level funding.
Yeah.
With a modest increase to, uh, take over some towns like Carver again. Because I think they dropped, and they're looking for somebody to assist in Plymouth, which, you know, I need to talk to Bob to make sure he negotiates a proper settlement there because Plymouth is big.
Yeah. So do you foresee the staff increasing for next year again?
I think he'll use contract staff like he has been to do some of the compliance checks. And certainly needs to use contract employees for the sting operations because these are young kids.
Who's the boss you're referring to?
Bob Colette.
Colette, okay.
Bob Colette runs the program, and it's, it's been very successful in our towns. But as the settlement money from the state has been...
Diverted.
Diverted. Yeah, I was looking for the right word. Thank you. Uh, then, of course, they get squeezed and towns that had had their own efforts have said, "It isn't worth it." So the state is looking toward more of a regional model. Well, you know, they can't quite do it. We're not in Plymouth's region for emergency planning even, but they're saying, "Okay, we'll throw you in there." They, they want us to take Plymouth and I believe Carver back also. So I'll sit down with Bob and we'll go over.
What about this, I thought there was a southeast region.
There is a southeast region. It's Cape and Islands. Uh, for the public health emergency planning, Region Five. We're, uh, we are our own sub-region. It's, it doesn't include Plymouth. Although we talk to Plymouth a bit, not as much as we do the island.
In time past, I know that we had, the county had come up for, for money for interoperability, not interoperability, intercommunications ability.
Interoperability of the radio system. They had the 400, we had the 800. So, yeah, there was some issues there and they, I think, have resolved them with the fire departments. But there is also another grant out there, another discussion about, uh, another radio system. But Sean O'Brien would be able to bring you up to speed on that.
And the other piece, you know, before you leave the, you know, the communications piece, I know that as Open Cape begins to develop, that that also offers an opportunity for, you know, for, you know, part of the communications network.
Absolutely.
And I hope you're, you know, you're thinking about how that can be successfully integrated into what you're doing.
Sure. Sean O'Brien is definitely, he's on the, uh, the steering committee there. So he, he is definitely keeping an eye to the future to how do we enhance what we already have.
That's part of the beauty of it.
The nice part about what we see going on there with, if there is a nice part, there's always a silver lining. The nice part about when things start getting tight and crunching, as things shift around, it does offer opportunities to say, "You know, we could do this. We could take this on. We could move this out. We could shift this here." And I think that through your gracious support, as well as the rest of the counties, we have a department that is flexible enough to take advantage of that. We have a lot of cross-county people that, you know, if there's a public health push that needs to be done, an environmental push that qualified both areas. I, I'm really happy with how Marina Brock is working now with, uh, the Mass Maritime. She's getting interns out into the towns where they're losing staff to be able to write some of their safety plans for them. Because we couldn't do that. I mean, we couldn't, we don't have staff to be able to write their safety plans. But she's actually integrating that into some coursework for them to write their safety plans for the towns that work in an interim fashion to, to get exactly what they need. Now, and it's, it's really, it's really nice to have that flexibility in the staff and the qualifications.
Tiju Reed, where the, uh, Mass Maritime is gonna be doing weddings this summer.
Oh, yeah.
They bought the beach more from Rita.
Right.
Yeah?
Well, they bought that, was it the honeymoon motel when they got, the dormitory, right?
Well, the beach more. Yeah, that's what, that whole beach more.
Ah, what's the beach more that...
It was, that Rita Pacheco's place, yeah.
It was the beach more, yes.
Yeah.
Who knows what's gonna happen next up there.
And apparently, they promoted, or they moved one of their female command, command, unit commanders, or whatever they call them, to be the wedding planner for the rest of the year.
Wow.
Because they had weddings already scheduled for their, kind of, interesting.
Oh, yes. They signed up there two years ago, two, three years ago.
Yeah, that was a good story.
I'll have to check my checkbook.
Anyway.
MRC, you've got that covered?
Yes.
For 2012?
I believe that's covered through the Public Health Emergency Grant, a FER grant.
And you've been very good at getting grants overall. George has done a fantastic job, kind of, finding grants in these little niches.
And in for the eight years that I've been doing this, I have, I have to say, I continually to be impressed with the fact that, you're one of the biggest revenue producers that we have. It, um, you know, that I don't, I don't know how we would be able to, you know, continue to offer the high-value services that, you know, that we have if it wasn't for your leadership.
Thank you.
And, and I know that, that evidence of the, what I'd call the, uh, the esprit de corps that, you know, that your organization has is just to go up and see how you furnished the, you know, the outfit up there.
Yeah, that's great.
With all the talk in the public sector about, you know, was it, uh, million-dollar gold-plated offices, the fact that your folks got together, went to yard sales and, and salvaged yards and, and...
Yeah, it looks good.
And painted.
It does look good.
I saw the picture, the enterprise of decorations around a jail cell.
Yeah.
What's in the enterprise of that town? It was a good shot.
Yep.
In any case, I think all of your group is to be congratulated and, and express, express the gratitude that we have for the hard work that they do for us.
I do have one more question, and it is kind of on this revenue thing. And it's, you know, you guys monitor the alternative onsite sector.
Yep.
How do you pay for that?
We actually, uh, if you recall, last year, we actually set up a fund for that. So this year, it goes, it goes live, that it pays for itself.
Okay.
And how we do that is everyone who owns, operates, maintains, or monitors the system on Cape Cod pays to us a $50 fee to use the system, which takes in their data and reports it back to the town. Brian Baumgartel is the person who runs that program. And so we've had fair success, although we're still hunting certain rabbits down, to obtain those fees. Because every town has a regulation, with the exception of one town, uh, has a regulation that says, "You must use a county system of reporting" because it's paperless. Uh, now, we just said to the towns, we actually went to all the agents and said, "Look, you like this service?" They said, "Yes." "Would you pay for this service?" They said, "No." They said, "Would you want this service paid for?" "Yes." Here's how we propose it. We laid out the plan. First year, $25 for every reporting entity. Second year, 50. Stays at 50 forever. And so that is fed into that account, which this next fiscal year will pay Brian Baumgartel.
That's my question. So Brian now will be paid out of this special revenue fund, LX1.
Now, we have also, if you recall, last year, asked for that same type of fund to be set up for bathing beaches. Because here's what was happening. We were charging, we don't charge the towns to collect the samples at their public beaches. We get the grant every year from the state to do it. That might wean off, and we knew that that might wean away. And so last year, we set up a fund, which said, "Look, you pay for the analysis, semi-public beaches. However, we're taking a hit on picking your sample up, delivering it, reporting to the state for you, all of that. That service, we thought that they should pay for." So that service will begin, not this fiscal year, but the following, to start paying for our beach collectors, start paying for our beach monitoring person.
So that's the summer beach samples?
Yes. Those should start to get paid next year from this account. And the reason we did that was because we have slated four beach collectors that work regionally. The problem had been that, um, if not many semi-public beaches decide to use our service, we don't need four. We need three. If more come in, and there's anticipated, we did some homework. We figured there's about 200 out there that aren't getting captured. If they come in, we can't come back to you midpoint in the year and say, "Oh, we need one more person." So we decided the flexibility built in is to be able to say, "Okay, we hire one more person to do those 200." Because it produces revenue which pays for itself. And the lab gets paid their, their going rate. We just pay them out of that account.
Excellent.
Great.
Okay. Are there any other, having none? George, thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
We think of anything, we'll tie it back.
Excellent.
We're gonna have a time.
See you next year.
Yep.
Well, someplace sooner than that.
Maybe next weekend.
Good job, George.
Next weekend.
So we have, uh, a cylinder scheduled that'll...
Good, I can take a break.
You wanna take a, uh, recess for five minutes? I could use some energy.
Yeah.
If John is available.
I'll go get a coffee if anybody wants one over here.
So maybe quarter of then?
Quarter of, okay.
Is that right? And I'll see if John's available.